Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont. Committee, the whole meeting for December 2nd, 2010. I'd like to call upon our village clerk to please begin by taking the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Clevino.
Here.
Trustee Scott Sampson. Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Semenek.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Budget Analyst Parker.
Here.
Interim Finance Director Mathis.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Prevention Bureau Director Daniels.
Sir.
Village Planner Malik.
Here.
IT Supervisor Liljeberg.
Here.
Although we have half of the staff here with us.
[laughing].
Join us in the pledge allegiance.
Hi, pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held November 11th, and board meeting held November 15th, 2010. Any corrections to be reported? Hearing none, moving right along. Open forum, we have one open forum request before us this evening, and that's from Larry Forsberg from the Westmont Chamber of Commerce. Larry?
Good evening all, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Last Friday, everybody heard about Black Friday, one of the biggest days for people to go out and shop. Monday was Cyber Monday, another huge day for online shopping. I'm here to remind everyone that here in Westmont, we've got a lot of great merchants and restaurants and businesses, and as we go out and do our shopping for the holidays, and we have our office parties and our get-togethers for dinners and so forth, please keep in mind to shop and dine and discover Westmont, not only here in December, but for the upcoming year in 2011. When you do that, you're investing in our community, and you're helping our community grow and be stronger in the future. So, remember to shop, dine, and discover Westmont. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I think, as I bring up often, if we don't support the businesses in our community, any of them won't make it. They can't depend just on people from outside the community to come and support them, so we have to do our good deed and try to support them as much as we can. We often get the question, why aren't there more businesses in downtown Westmont? Why don't we have more businesses? Well, one of the reasons is we have to have the support of the village to keep these, to bring these people in and to keep them in operation, so please keep in mind, everyone here and those people watching us this evening, as Larry mentioned, support our businesses and do what we can to spend our money for the holiday season and beyond here in the Village of Westmont. Thank you. Moving right along, reports. I have a couple of things. The first thing I'd like to do is just congratulate the Westmont Park District, the village staff, and everyone else that was involved in kickoff for our holiday celebration and the parade last Friday evening. It was a very chilly evening, and for those of you that walked the entire parade route, it was indeed a chilly event to enjoy, but I think it was well worth it, and I think everyone had a good time. And there was one small snafu where several parents and one of the elected officials came up to me afterwards and said, "Mr. Mayor, we were unable to hear the countdown. We were standing over by the Christmas tree, waiting for the countdown and the tree to light up, and all of a sudden it lit up, but we never heard the countdown, so the public address system was not working properly." So, I've spoken to Glenn Liljeberg up here in the front, and he assures me that between he and Larry that there's going to be sound over by the tree next year, so all the families and everyone interested can hear the final countdown to light our annual Christmas tree. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that some of you may have seen this, the Carrier Heating Corporation dealers in the Chicagoland area have volunteered and will be installing free furnaces in 63 homes around the Chicagoland area. These will be installed to needy families who apply and indicate that they're interested and would qualify for something like this. So, Hearthstone Heating and Cooling, which has their business here in Westmont, has volunteered to be one of these dealers, and they will pay for the installation of the furnace, and Carrier will donate the actual furnace. So, I think it's indeed a nice program, so if anyone watching would like to find out more about it, they can go to, it's called comfort247.com. So, if they go to WWcomfort247.com, they can find out more information, or come to the village clerk's office, and they will also have this information to share with anyone that you know may be in need of having a new furnace, and for one reason or another may not be able to afford it at this time of the year. And the deadline for this is December 31st. Thank you. And the last thing I wanted to bring up is to offer our condolences to Marie and Joe Guzzo, who are longtime residents of the Village of Westmont. Marie was on the board previously, on the passing of Joe's father, Antonio Guzzo. And the services for him will be tomorrow morning in Holy Trinity Catholic Church Friday morning at 9:30 a.m. So, our condolences go out to the Guzzo family this evening. And that is all that I have right now. And moving right along, our village clerk, Jenny Simmski.
No, I just go along with your kudos for the parade. It was fun. It was cold, like you said, but if you were bundled up, you were fine, and it was nice to see that many people out in that kind of weather. And of course, we had the elf with the candy that was running around. That's Westmont's elf, trustee Emery.
That's all I have. Okay. Thank you. Our village attorney, John Semenek.
I've got nothing to report, thanks.
Village manager Ron Searle.
Thank you. I'd like to request an executive session on personnel following the regular meeting. And also, I passed out a list of one additional or supplemental purchase order in the amount of 30, not to exceed $35,000 for black box network services. This is an expenditure related to our consolidation of dispatch services with Downers Grove. What I wanted to bring to the board's attention is we may in fact eventually void this purchase order out and replace it with a different one for a lesser amount, but because of the time of the year, we wanted to get an approval so that we can finalize our research, decide who the vendor is that we're going to use, and get that work started with the weather turning bad. This is funds that we've applied to the county through the emergency telephones systems board for reimbursement for, so we hope to get that reimbursed eventually, but I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention. You may see a purchase order in the future for a different vendor for the same type of work, and then we will note at that time that it replaces this particular purchase order. So, I'd like to add this to the agenda for Monday for tentative approval. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee items, start with trustee Clevino.
I have a few things this evening. First of all, we have the Westmont High School, will have their annual craft show this Saturday, December 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Westmont Junior High, so hopefully everybody can make it and enjoy the beautiful crafts.
At the high school, isn't it?
At the high school. Mm-hmm. At the, I'm sorry, yeah, the high school. And just a question, this should be on December 10th, Friday. I believe that is our last electronic recycling for the year.
According to the calendar.
Are we going to have it available again next year, do you know?
Yes. Yes, we have confirmed with DuPage County that the program will be in place for next year, and we will start it off in May.
In May of next year. Okay, so for everybody who has electronics on your list, if you want to get rid of the old ones before Christmas and not hang on to them till May, your last drop-off is from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., southwest corner of Blackhawk Drive and Plaza Drive, Friday, December 10th. And I just want to again add my sympathy to the Guzzo family. It's only been seven months since Marie lost her father, and now it's her father-in-law, and Joe and Marie have taken good care of him until now, and now they're hopefully going to take good care of mom, her mother-in-law, so sympathies to the family, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Forsley.
I too just want to extend the sympathies to the Guzzo family, and also congratulate the Park District on, you know, holidays. And then, I don't know if anybody saw Wheel of Fortune last night, but our own Brad Gunter was on, which is our Park District, Ron Gunther's son, and did a nice job. Unfortunately, he got some bankrupts. He knew the puzzles.
Ah.
He knew the puzzles, you could tell, but he got the bankrupt, so he didn't win, he wasn't the big winner, but he did a good job. So, just congratulations to all of them. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
Just briefly, I want to say that, and you're not going to hear me say this very often, but the article that was written in the progress about the recycling was actually rather well-done. It's been a long time since I've been able to say that an article in that paper was actually done.
A long time since I read one.
The way it should be, the quotes were right, everything was right. I didn't have any qualms with it. The only thing that I kind of want to defer to the village manager was that there was one question about multifamily recycling. If you could maybe kind of comment a little bit on what our status is on that.
Well, periodically, we do hear from tenants of multifamily recycling, or multifamily dwelling units, asking about recycling. Actually, since 2000, we've had an ordinance in place that does require it to be offered by the owners or the management company of the apartment buildings. So, if in fact that is not being done, we would urge anyone who is aware of that to contact us and let us know, and we'll follow up with the management or the ownership of those particular buildings.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just to echo everyone's comments on the holidays parade, it was a lot of fun, it was absolutely great, and for anyone that wonders, if you buy those little heat things to put into your shoes, they work. I had them, and my feet were burning. Everybody else was freezing, and I was like doing the happy dance, trying to keep my feet cold.
So, you were walking so fast.
Yeah, I was walking fast because of that. It was a great event. Also, wanted to say thank you to our staff that did the fabulous job of decorating the train station in Mary Egan. We're a little low on decorations this year for budgetary reasons, and hopefully things will pick up, and we'll be back where we were and can decorate the downtown again next year. We'll, you know, that remains to be seen. And then I also wanted to just add to the condolences of, for the Guzzo family, we suffered many losses right here in our village recently. Lori Brady lost her mother, and Dave Weiss lost his mother-in-law, and Jim Gunther, our deputy chief, also lost a family member just this past week, so condolences to all of those families as well, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Emery.
I echo everyone's condolences. This has been a very sad kickoff to the holiday season for people to lose so many family members, and it's difficult, and our hearts go out to them. And also, the code enforcement meeting, that committee meets 6:30 p.m. on Monday, the 6th of December, prior to our village board meeting. I was also pleased with the Progress's article, lead article, on the retail roundup. It was like the holidays present to the village, to have such nice articles for a change that were right on the money and favorable, so that was nice to see. And also, the holidays parade was a blast. I do have to commend all the kids who were freezing their little butts off. They had blankets on them and everything, and there were so many of them that I ran out of all the candy by the time I got to Norfolk, and then, you know, I was like, my God, there's 3,000 kids ahead of me.
I think you like the people in the north better.
So, next year, I'll have a wagon, and I will probably ask for a waiver of the anti-throwing ordinance, because the chief told me, if you pelt anybody with candy, I will arrest you. So, I will be in for a waiver next year. Love it.
Thank you. Unfinished business. First item, development permit request, 15 South Cass. Board to consider development permit request from Mr. Jerry Navarro for a family restaurant at 15 South Cass. Once again, Mr. Navarro has requested that this item be postponed until the December 16th meeting.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we ask, or can I ask, before it comes back, if we could have something in our packet? Again, we've received nothing of anything regarding that, you know, what he wants, and you know, we're asking some questions, but if we could have something in the packet like we have of others, we appreciate it, because it was just that one sheet that he would be back. So, I'm not sure.
I agree with you. I think part of the problem is that he's been ill. I don't think he's been able to.
Put something together?
Put anything together to bring, but we'll make sure that before he comes before us, we have that information from staff. Red Kimball's shaking his head yes in the back of the room. Thank you. New business. Temporary outdoor sales request, 111 South Cass. Board to consider request from Mr. Jim Murray to allow the temporary outdoor sale of Christmas Do we have the petitioner here for this request?
Your Honor, we're not quite sure why the petitioner is not here tonight, but I know the fire chief and I, and I think the village manager, had a meeting the other day with regard to the request. Originally, this was a request that they made, asking that the Christmas tree sales be done downtown at the Knights of Columbus patio area immediately south of their building, and I think the fire department had several concerns with a Christmas tree sale next to a frame building, and they wanted to put like a campfire there right next to all these live Christmas trees, and so I guess they have been known to burn, chief? Is that?
Yes. So, anyway, I had a conversation, a phone conversation with the gentleman, and what they have done is they agreed to go back to the property at Holy Trinity Church and make the sales there rather than at the Knights of Columbus Hall.
Okay.
So.
Good. I think staff is much more comfortable with that, your honor, as a location for a live Christmas tree sale, and we certainly.
There's just not enough room there.
So, we can just pull this from the agenda also?
No. It's voted on Monday.
Change the address.
Let's change the address.
Well, yeah, the address is actually correct.
Yeah.
We need to issue the permit. 111 South Cass? That's correct. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that is correct. That's correct.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item, Westmont Train Depot, 18 West Quincy. Westmont Chamber of Commerce, board to consider approval of replacement of a wood display rack in the Westmont Train Depot to display business and community event promotional materials. Eric Forsberg, again.
Good evening, and thank you. This is a kind of a follow-up to a request that we made about a year and a half ago as part of our tourism request. We had put, made plans to put a display rack in the train station, and we've been kind of shopping for something that we thought would be the right fit. We've come up with something, I think you have pictures in your packet of what the display unit looks like, but the really, the goal of this is to help promote the business community. By putting this display rack in the train station, we hope to capture more business from the commuters and our guests that come through the train station on a daily basis. We basically plan on putting advertising and promotional materials in a display rack, and it's going to offer our businesses a very affordable opportunity to promote the businesses. What the display rack will contain will be brochures, booklets, coupon sheets, display ads, and business cards in the overall case. In terms of its capacities, there's 12 display ads that are basically 11 and 1/2 by 9. We'll use those, I envision using those to not only help promote businesses, but to help promote special events such as Red White and Barbecue, the Taste of Westmont, and on throughout the course of the year. There's also 72 positions for items that are 8 and 1/2 by 11 or smaller. We have 72 business card holders that we can put in there, and we have within this cabinet capacity to store materials, that we can lock and secure the materials inside the cabinet. In terms of who will be using this, chamber members, prospective chamber members, community organizations in the Village of Westmont will make it available to the village to put any type of information there that you feel is important to get out to the commuters and to the general public. We will monitor the display case on a daily basis as we go along. We'll do it on a daily basis, and depending upon what we're seeing, we'll lengthen it or shorten it as needed. There's also an individual that's in the train station from 5:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. that's there selling tickets, so the station's never totally unoccupied. There will be somebody there until that point, and that's when, at 1:30 is the time when the station is secured. So, in terms of safety concerns, because I know we've had some discussions about potential for vandalism, potential for people going in there and throwing things around and kind of making a mess, so we will monitor that, and longer term, if we see it's not working out, we would certainly be willing to remove it from the train station. We'd just like to give us a try and see what we can do to promote our businesses in the community. Now, in terms of where it would be, if you look at this photograph, when you walk in the main entrance of the train station, this is envision yourself at the top of the stairs looking north. So, where we would see this display case is right there against that north wall. That wall's approximately about 12 feet wide between the two vertical columns, and we would basically center it on that wall right there. Here's kind of a different view, looking from, if you were over by the ticket agent, looking from the southwest, looking towards the northeast, that's what you would see. And this is actually what the display case looks like. It's a very nice oak custom-made piece. This is something that they normally would sell for over a couple thousand dollars, and it was currently, or previously, recently being used by the Oak Park River Forest Chamber of Commerce, and through some connections, as a result of a move, we were able to acquire it at a very modest cost in terms of moving it and some minor modifications we would make to make sure it's secure for use at the train station. So, very nice piece, we think it would complement the train station, we think it will give our members in our community a chance to communicate more effectively with the commuters. We have over 1,000 people that go through that station on a daily basis, and again, we'll monitor it very closely to make sure that things aren't being tossed around, making a mess, and make sure that things are not looking less than appropriate.
Larry, how are you going to get around the, on that wall there, there's a big brick and concrete, see it between the benches below the?
Extinguisher?
Yeah, below the fire extinguisher.
We have taken, that's a good question. We've taken a look at that particular piece, and we think it's simply a decorative piece that can be easily removed without causing any structural problems or concerns to the building, and also remove the two benches from that area. Now, the benches could be relocated elsewhere if necessary, but we feel that from looking at it, we think that within a couple hours' worth of work, we could have it taken out.
I don't think there's anywhere else you can put the benches, but would you rehang the fire extinguisher somewhere in there?
Well, that's from a safety requirement, we would have to have that fire extinguisher present.
Okay.
So, that would require it to be relocated somewhere nearby. But that's a good question, and it's something that we've taken a look at. Now, we looked at other possibilities in the station, and anywhere else that we would put it would block windows, and it simply wouldn't be practical.
Any other questions?
When you said you were going to monitor just like once a day, or?
At first.
The only thing that bothers me is I'm afraid, the way some kids are, or anybody, adults, anybody, is they're going to sneak some stuff in there. There could be literature you wouldn't want, you know, maybe adult-only literature, somebody might sneak in there, so I was just wondering how often you might be able to, it's so large to police to make sure somebody didn't sneak something that would offend.
That's a good point. At first, we would expect to check this on a daily basis, and kind of observe and see what, you know, how the community's interacting with it. If people are putting inappropriate information, or information that's not been approved, if it's been placed in there, we would remove it. So, on a daily basis, the reality is our office is only a couple hundred yards away from where this would be situated, so it's very easy just to take a walk over there and see what's going on.
If somebody wanted to display something, whether it was the Lions Club or whoever wants to do something, would they, should they come to you first to show you? I'd appreciate going there.
We would control what materials are being displayed in the piece.
Okay, so they would first have to get permission from you? They just can't, just anybody can just go up there and start putting business cards or the literature?
Otherwise, you know, control would be lost, and there'd be all kinds of materials and so forth. So, if we found something in there from one of the communities, for example, a church, and we would give them a call and say, would you please contact us first and, you know, get our approval to place that in there? But we are going to work with all the community groups, because we see this as a great opportunity to promote what's going on in the community. Right now, there's not, there's not been a really effective way to communicate with the commuters, and these are people who are obviously in our community on a daily basis, and we want to capture their business.
The only other thing, I think it's a great idea, I was excited to see that. The only comment, will there be a sign or something that says "Property of" the chamber?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I can see people wanting, you know, for sale a bicycle, or for sale a car, just sticking that on there, like trustee Clevino's saying, but if it says "Property of."
Property of, and a contact number, so they could reach us and our address and so forth.
They know.
Again, we're less than a couple hundred yards away, so if somebody really was curious, they could simply walk over and see us, and as we're checking on it on a daily basis, we get observed and see if there's something that's not appropriate in there.
Right.
Right. Or it's just a sale of Park River Forest.
Well, that's one of the modifications we need to make. You see, there's some doorknobs that are on the lower cabinets, we plan on removing those, they're going to be locked and secured, you know, we're trying to make it as goofproof as possible, if you will, to keep it from being damaged.
Good. Sounds good.
Any other questions? We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next item, waiver request, 313 West Ogden. Board to consider approval of a waiver request from Mr. Greg Simmski to defer the application of additional sheetrock fireproofing materials to one side of an interior wall of a currently occupied space until a change of occupancy occurs.
Hi. This occurred because there's a new tenant coming in a vacant space, and the building inspector went in, and in the attic, he wanted a fire stop. So, we put a fire stop not only on the side for the new tenant, but also the side for the existing tenant. Double five-eighths inch drywall was put on the side of the new tenant, but to go into an existing tenant, have them remove all their materials off their walls, and put another five-eighths inch drywall on that side seems a little bit unreasonable. I said that we would sign a letter, as soon as that tenant leaves, we would then comply with the change in the law.
Questions, board members?
The only thing I will say, I concur with what you're saying, I did go up and visit the ladies next door. There is a lot of material along that wall, it is, it would be a fair amount of work. I'm not, I still don't like the way we're having to do this, I'm not opposed to the way it's being handled. The only thing that I would request is that we kind of have a deadline for smokes and heat sensors of 2013. Instead of change of tenant, maybe a year and a half, two years out, maybe work out with them to try to get that done?
Well, then, you would have to do it to every place that's there. Every tenant that's in the plaza right now probably does not have that. So, I would have to go into every tenant that's there and disrupt them, and do it to every, and you'd have to probably go to every building in Westmont that doesn't have double five-eighths inch drywall on them, and every store that exists, and have them do that. Why would I be singled out just to do that one wall? I mean, we're going to do what the fire department requests. Frank wants, and Fred has gone along with this, and we said that we would do that, and I really don't know if the Catholic shop's going to be there that much longer anyway. But to have them remove all their items and redo it seems to be a little bit unreasonable.
Okay. I mean, I was just asking a simple question. That's all.
I mean, I want to comply. That's why we did, we didn't have to do the other side, but we did the other side too. So, we did them both. So, you wouldn't have to go back up there and do it again when that tenant leaves, so the only one that we can't touch is the wall that exists. So, the only one that we can't touch is the wall that exists because it's occupied.
And the repairs are going to be made to the one spot that...
Correct. Correct.
Came through on there, right?
That's all done, correct, Lou?
Yeah, the top is done on both sides. So, there's four layers up in the attic.
Right, four layers now.
But, there was a spot on their side that somebody actually broke the drywall on their side?
Yeah, I think the plumber, one of the construction guys was messing around. He popped through there, but we offered to fix that for them.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I can, I can understand the request and why it's there. I just, I mean, I just uncomfortable with doing things in a long-range plan.
And if it can be done sooner, if they move their stuff, we'll do it. We have no problem trying to comply. It's not the intent not to comply.
Okay.
How long has the tenant been in that building, the Catholic shop?
Twenty-five years, maybe.
Long as I can remember.
Long time.
Yeah, that's what worried me, on how long they could be there.
They've been there a long time.
So, that was bothersome on how long they might still be there because I haven't seen any sign that they're...
Well, Larry's, Larry is not well.
Okay, so, it wouldn't look like it'd turn over to another owner?
Yeah, I would probably say yes. And then, there'll be a lot of changes in there once it happens.
Other questions?
Sounds very reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Will be on the agenda for consideration on Monday. Next item, development permit request, 218 North Cass. Board to consider the following request from Mr. John Hagedorn. A, downtown development permit request operated music store. And B, masonry waiver request to operate a commercial business on a frame structure. Yes, please.
Your honor, if the staff would like to correct a, an error on the agenda. The listing of 218 North Cass was taken off of our zoning map, and we believe that we've discovered that it does have an error. We believe the correct address here is 216, and we apologize for that error, and we will have that corrected for the agenda on Monday evening.
Okay.
Sorry. I've never done this before, so I'm just asking for a permit to open a music store specifically to sell violins at the store. And I've met with Fred, and with Shannon, and with Doug Daniels, and gone over what needs to be done, and he had an architect come up with them drawings and kind of following the guidelines that I've been given so far. I don't know what the next process would be.
Do we have input from staff regarding this request?
Yes, your honor, we have, as Mr. Hagedorn has mentioned, we have met with him on a couple of occasions, and we've also had Mr. Hagedorn spend a considerable amount of time with Mike Tarnowski of Don Morris Architects, our building plan reviewer and building inspector. He is going to be requiring Mr. Hagedorn to provide stamped architectural drawings to show that this does meet current codes and does meet our current fire and life safety codes. I believe Inspector Daniels and Chief Trout have been weighing in on the discussion as well. We know that you have received some correspondence from some concerned citizens in a building which is directly to the south of this building, concerned with, you know, fire situations. And Doug, I think we've indicated that this building must have the appropriate fire alarm system into the dispatch center to...
Right, and John's fully aware of what our requirements are, and he's agreed to install the system prior to moving in.
What all needs to be done? What needs to be done structurally? What needs to be done on the interior? What is intended to be done, if anything, on the outside? And what's going to be done to bring it up to code, to fire code? Because although I respect the fact you say you're going to bring it up to code, what all needs to be done?
Well, we won't know that, trustee, until we get the full report of the architect. That is what a design professional is hired to do, is to say, I made my client familiar with all of the requirements under the code. One of the things that Mr. Tarnowski had was a concern about the load-bearing capability. This structure was, I think, originally maybe built as a residence a number of years ago, and for a number of years, it had like an appliance store, I think, in the front, and the owners of the appliance store, I believe, lived in the rear. So, one of the things that the architect is going to have to do is certify that structurally the floor joists are capable of supporting, I believe it's 100 pounds per square foot of load on this, and the architect will have to stamp and certify drawings to that effect. The architect will also have to stamp and certify that meets current fire code requirements, and as we've mentioned, the fire department will insist that a full and complete fire alarm system will be installed that will be connected to our dispatch center. So, those are among the things that we're looking at right now, awaiting the full report of the architect.
There's other things that you would see in a normal store. Exit signs, urgency lighting, means of egress. He's, John's been aware of all this that we've discussed, that we will continually, after we see the drawings and the work that he's going to do.
Just, just as a, just as a point going forward here, and we want to see people come into the downtown area, and we want to see these buildings occupied and retail spaces put in. I guess my main question that I have at this point in time is, do you have any idea what kind of an investment's going to have to be made in this building to bring it up to what it needs to be?
Well, that's what we're, I have an architect that we've hired to, they've done some drawings already, and that's why we're meeting with, met with Doug Daniels and Fred to...
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about electrical, plumbing...
John, come, what you've done so far.
You're talking, I mean, you're talking about...
We have actually a permit for...
Yeah, we, sorry, we went, we had a permit for the electrical.
We have, you know, licensed electricians to put in all-new feeds to bring everything up to compliance. So, there's, you know, I'm going to be in the building. I want it safe also. So, if I'm going to be there, it's in my best interest to make sure everything is in compliance. And that's why we had...
When, when is the architect supposed to have do this inspection to let you know whether or not this building is going to be able to handle what you, what you want it to do? I mean, when is, when is that going to take place?
Within the next, well, there has to be a structural engineer come and actually review, and then the architect will make a, you know, a report, and then within the next couple of weeks, I'd imagine. We just, I just had some drawings made up just to give you an idea of what we're looking to do, and...
I honestly would really like to see what, what the engineer has to say about this building.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, you know, I'd just be curious to see what they have to say about the building before we actually, I guess, I guess we could put an attachment to it that it's something that we would like to see. I'd like to see the engineer's report and the architect's report on this building.
Well, staff will definitely be seeing it.
Right, but...
I have a question.
It should be automatic with staff.
Yeah, I mean, that...
They're not going to approve it unless it meets current safety standards for plumbing, electricity, whatever. That's what their, that's what their job is. They're not going to let them go ahead with it until they tell him exactly what has to be done and somehow determine what the cost for that is going to be. That's not our responsibility. That's with staff and, and your money.
Right, exactly.
I do have a question about your, your drawings. The building is going to look really, really nice with your plan, but the, the one drawing indicates that you're going to restore the masonry facade, yet the drawing looks as though it's some sort of frame covering.
That's because we're still trying to, we went to the Historical Society and trying to follow the guidelines for the Westmont Main Street. We still...
We don't have Main Street anymore.
Well, I mean, the, the guidelines for the development...
Okay.
Of the facade.
Because it looks really, really nice, but so, this will be masonry up here? You're going to keep the brick?
Yeah, that was just our understanding of what it could be, you know, just to give you an idea of, it won't be what it is now, which is...
No, I'm sure it'll be improved a lot.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll be improved a lot.
And all the windows, the, there's windows actually that are just covered up from the stone that was put up whenever they did that.
Wow.
Yeah, so, it's really, it's a nice building, actually.
It's a unique building. If you can bring it up to code and make it structurally sound, it probably has a lot, a lot of nice potential.
Mr. Hagedorn, are you going to sell anything other than violins?
No, just mainly violins, cellos, that type of stuff.
Will you do repair and refurbishing also?
No, just sales.
Okay, so, you won't have like stored lacquers and...
No.
Just checking.
We have other people that do that outside of business, much more qualified than we would be.
Where, you know, I'm probably putting the cart before the horse because we'll probably have other opportunities to ask you questions, but who's your audience? I mean, it seems, it seems like it would be a pretty small, customer-based, it seems like it would be a pretty small need for violins, but maybe they come from, where do people...
Every school, all...
Okay, so...
People all around.
So, like for schools and...
Huge business.
That's interesting.
Well, we've been in, I've been in the business for 30-some years, so...
So, there's definitely a demand, is...
Yeah, there's a demand for just like...
Because you said this was the first time you've been in front, so you've not owned your own business, or...
Oh, yeah. For, we, I've had music stores in Berwin, Cicero. We actually own the, the building at 33 North Cass. The Costel family has Uncle John's music, and we started that, and then they were our friends, and I had these other stores, and we just couldn't handle all these stores, so they said, hey, this sounds like a fun...
Now, it's all coming together, yeah.
Okay.
So, they're very close friends of ours.
Yeah, that's a great store, by the way, so...
Oh, they're, they're great people, so...
We're happy to have them in town.
Yeah, so, that's why we'd be just doing the violin type of thing.
Okay, excellent.
Makes more sense.
And that store, really, the, the look of it really...
Yeah.
Would work well for that type of business.
Yeah, it kind of fits.
Be very nice. Could we possibly put these on the overhead for people at home? Looking at the exteriors there and not visualizing the building, is this a freestanding building? Are you connected to a party wall?
That's a freestanding.
It's a freestanding. Is it brick all the way around on all four sides?
It's a frame.
Is it just front brick and framed on the three sides?
Frame structure.
How long has the building been vacant? Any particular amount of time?
Several years. Several years. Several of the trustees, your honor, have kind of zeroed in on, on the key question here. Working with the architect, this is going to give Mr. Hagedorn an opportunity to make a business decision. Based on what the findings of the architect are and in compliance with all of our modern building and fire and life safety codes, he's going to have to make a business decision then. Based on what he has to do to the building, is it economically viable for him to move forward with a project like this, or is the cost prohibitive? And that's what he's trying to determine at this point. Another issue that is, is a concern is that the handicapped accessibility of restroom facilities. As you'll note, there are some steps that lead up to this building, and then there's, I think, a grade differential in this building that's going to have to be dealt with. So, the architect will be prepared to work with Mr. Hagedorn in that regard, and he may also have to contact the Illinois Capital Development Board to get an opinion about whether or not an existing condition like this is acceptable, and what level of handicapped accessibility he will have to build into the structure.
Those are all the steps that, you know, that we need to walk down that path and see where that leads.
What is it like inside? Is it a flat roof that's behind that peak? Or is it a gable roof?
Gable.
It's a small gable roof? I was just wondering if it's been unoccupied, if there's been leakage, which has deteriorated a lot of stuff in there.
No, we had it inspected before we bought it by a company in Naperville called Brick Kickers, and they go through and inspect it, make sure it's in reasonably good shape, and there's no...
So, what do you recommend, John? Do we vote Monday on the development permit, or do we, or do we hold it till we get, find out what the architect says, and Mr. Hagedorn can make his decision then?
It's up to you. You can approve it by ordinance, subject to certain conditions where it has to meet staff approval. If he decides to abandon the project, there's no harm in having an approved ordinance for a business that never opens. If you feel like there's a need to see what the findings are, certainly you can defer this to a later date.
I think I'd like to defer it just till we know that we're going to have a building that is going to be able to economically be brought up to code, that for the protection of anybody that's in it as well as anybody close to it. So, I'd like to hold it till we know that it's, that it's a doable project and that, you know, you want to greenlight it. So, because I'm not comfortable approving a development request that you might at some time abandon, and we're all sitting here going, whatever happened.
And that's happened several times now.
Yep.
Yes. Where we've approved something, and they found out they couldn't go through with it, and we're all waiting to see it open, not realizing that they walked away from it. So, because it's also very good advertisement for you, once, once we know it's on a go, it's kind of nice for the people in town who are watching to know that this is coming. But, they're the same way. They'll hit us and go, well, whatever happened? You approved it, and we're sitting there going, we don't know. We approved it, and we just don't see anything. I mean, it happened to, I think, a sunglass store, no, the sunglass store was there for a while, but they, they closed up fast, but there was something before that in the same building.
Ice cream store.
Yeah.
The ice cream store.
And our coffee thing thing.
The bistro at 15 South Cass.
Yeah.
There's a number of them.
We all sit there and wait for it to open, and everybody's asking, and we find out later that the people walked away, and we never really even knew about it. So, we'd like you to check it out first, and I would like to see what the structural engineers say. When was that building built? How old was it?
Oh, gosh, this has to be in the 20s, I would think. Maybe 27, 28 long in there.
Boy, you'd be surprised what might be hidden in those walls.
Yeah. Our only regret, trustee, is that what, the clock is gone.
Yeah.
No, I was just thinking if you were going to salvage, salvage the clock.
Well, actually, actually, there's, there is, there is somebody in town that would like to get their hands on that clock. So, if you do go through with this project, I would really like to give you their name. They're a avid collector of old items.
John, you know what happened to it, I think, don't you?
Yeah, actually, the owners took...
Are they taking it?
People that we bought it from, the only thing that they really wanted was the clock, and I, since it, that was in their family for so many years, and...
It's, it's always been the building with the clock.
Right.
I mean, it's how it's known, the building, it'll still be the building with the clock.
That could be part of what we do is actually we store and put the clock back up.
Oh, that would be cool.
We're still trying to figure out how to make it, you know, look the right way and want, you know, we want people to drive by and go, want to go in that building. Not the biggest building in the world, but it might be the, hopefully, one of the, you know, more attractive.
Yeah, I'd like to see this work. I'd like to see it work.
Yeah, we have a bunch of good architects working on it, a bunch of good people, so whatever the guidelines are, and we spent time, like I said, at the Historical Society and try to make it work. And I agree, the, the structural part of it is what it is, and there's no problem. You know, I'm not going, can't do that.
Right.
It's, seems reasonable. So, I'll go back and put our, get a structural engineer in there, and basically, it's just mainly has to do with the load-bearing. And if we can get that resolved, which may or may not be a problem, I don't know.
Right.
It's been standing there for many years, and people have been standing out in the woods, so hopefully, as far as I can tell from the inspection that we had done, you know, he's a licensed inspector that came in before we bought the building because I didn't want to buy a building that was going to fall down. He signed off on it, and so I don't think...
But, you also have to become handicapped accessible too, and that may cause a problem.
Let me get a historical, we were...
Yeah.
Yeah, based on the age of the building.
Mr. Doug Gamble with the Capital Development Board is the source authority and can grant exceptions based on historical significance or existing condition, and he would have to contact and receive approval from Mr. Gamble in order to move ahead if it weren't move ahead if it weren't able to be fully ADA.
And, and the architect has had communication with Doug Gamble and he seems like a really easy person to, I didn't speak with him, but the architect said, it seemed reasonable. He saw the building, he sees what our vision is, so they're not opposed to, you know, going, well, is it doable or not? So I think we'll get that letter sooner than later. So the next thing would be taking care of the, having a structural engineer come in and just.
Is there a basement? Is there a basement under it?
Uh, yeah, half basement. The other part is crawl space. And that's it, so we're, we're ready to move forward if it's.
I think John's being a little bit modest, Trustee Fleming, just so you know, he's had already gone and like he said, upgraded his electrical service and he is redoing, cause the wiring is pretty old in that building. He also installed a new furnace already.
Oh, wow.
So it's when my, Mike Tarnowski and myself were out there that we were looking at some of the structural areas of the building, that we suggested that he needs to go a different route before he continues any more work. But he definitely seems to be dedicated to this job, so.
Sounds like it.
I mean, I, I hope, I hope it all works out real well. I really do. I, I think it would be fantastic. It's just that, I mean, like, like Mr. Campbell said, that depending on what they say, it may become a economic decision. And the concerns that we've had, there've been some that we have given approvals to and then they just decide not to go through with the project. So that, that's, and that's not, you know, that's not your fault or anything like that. It's just that that's a concern that we have and, I mean, that's kind of the way I'd like to approach this project.
Well, we went ahead and got the electrical permit, we, you know, we went through all the right steps and we started putting in all new panels, all new electrical and then Doug came and said, what is that doing here? And they got the permit, no problem. That's when we stopped and said, okay, let's, let's take this other step first before we re-pipe everything and, you know, move too fast, so. Hopefully it'll all work out. Well, I'll see you in a couple, at the next meeting and you'll have.
Oh, that'd be great.
Do we, do we get you that information before the meeting, right?
Yeah, just with, work with Fred.
Yep.
What would be, what would the deadline be for him to get the information to Fred be on the next agenda for the sixteenth?
I think it's the eighth.
The eighth.
The eighth.
Was it the eighth? No, if you want to get on the December sixteenth agenda, we have to have the information from you by the eighth of December.
It's pretty tight.
It sounds like he needs a couple of weeks just to get the.
Yeah.
Structural engineer in and then they have the architect write it up.
I mean, that's just the deadline for the next meeting.
Yeah, John, I think the next opportunity would be the December thirtieth committee of the whole, which might be a more.
By the twenty-second then.
Yeah, by the twenty-second and that would give you another three weeks or so then to work with the architect.
Okay, is there anyone here from the public that has any input on this request? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very interesting project.
You postponed.
Right.
Next item, variance request two thirty-three West Sixty-third Street, AT&amp;T. Board to consider a zoning code variance request to permit more than three antennas on a structure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carol Fahy and I'm here in place of a colleague of mine who could not make it tonight, Amalda Gallagher. AT&amp;T is requesting this variance in order to make some upgrades that are necessary to improve the voice and data that is facilitated out of this wireless antenna facility. We are asking for this in order to avoid the proliferation of new towers in town. We're asking to just use the existing tower to put some, a few additional antennas in addition to making some upgrades on the antennas that are currently there. So we respectfully request that you approve our, our variance in order for us to do that.
Question?
This generates revenue for us, doesn't it, at this location?
Will it generate more revenue for us?
I believe this location does generate revenue for us, doesn't it?
No.
This is actually a private.
This is the private, this is Jill Van Lewen property, behind the Westmont yard.
Can we have an agreement though? I thought we had an agreement with them.
Nope, this is all revenue for them.
The water tower, we had.
Water tower only.
Okay, can you put them on the water tower instead?
I would like to say.
Serious.
I would like to say that it is a, instead of an addition, we're, we're actually making changes and upgrading an existing structure. So I see your point that you would rather have it on municipal, municipal property and I could see that if I were here coming with, if I were a different carrier coming, you know, I would see how you'd say, hey, come over to our water tower instead, but our structure is already there, our facility is already there, so we're just sort of making, you know, as technology improves. But I will say indirectly that improved voice and data keeps people that live, work and play and run businesses out of town, you know, happy with their coverage and staying put, so.
What's, what's the difference in the size and height of the new antennas versus the old?
It would be the same or smaller. The, the, the data, which is for the LTE, and there's, there's sizes listed in the A4O. I don't know if you have any plans there, but they're equivalent in size and if not smaller. It's a, really an unnoticed change to the, to the eye. So I could certainly see if we were putting, you know, twenty-foot antennas versus the usual five or six foot, but it'll be compatible to what is there now.
Okay, and you're increasing the, the actual number though, right?
We are increasing the actual number and we are taking one out, not replacing it. And it feels, I'm not sure if you have a report that was put forward to the village, but I can just go over that. We're adding three new antennas and at the same time, they'll be upgrading seven of them. And this is strictly to improve coverage. It's not going to be at a different array, antenna array, meaning a different height on the tower. So it would be virtually unrecognizable to the passerby. In fact, if you all who are aware of the situation were to look at it after it were done, you would probably not notice any change.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On our agenda for Monday. Next item, zoning code text amendment. Board to consider the following requests. A, amendments to section seven point oh-two business district provisions. B, amendments to section thirteen point oh-seven variances. C, amendments to section thirteen point oh-nine special uses. And D, amendments to sections thirteen point twelve amendments.
The board tasked me with drafting some ordinance language, so we had some standards in place when development permits are reviewed and approved. Also directed me to draft language to strengthen the special use language in the zoning ordinance, particularly as it relates to expiration of existing uses and the ability of a new owner to come in at some later time and try to reuse that special use and what, and whether new approval was required. Starting with the business district provisions first, and you have that, the proposed language was in your materials. In general, kind of sets forth the, the standards, when a development permit is required, what the purpose in subsection two, what the purpose of this development permit is, and in section three, some of the criteria that the board can consider in reviewing development permits. You'll see, one is aesthetic concerns. Subsection B is health and safety concerns, including that construction and repairs are building code compliant, et cetera. And that's kind of what you just dealt with. Now you, you would have authority in writing. C, promotion of the primary development goals of adding to the village's sales tax base through high-quality retail, upscale and family-oriented sit-down restaurants and specialty shops. I believe that has been the mission of the Economic Development Department. The chamber's been on board with that message and, and this village board has been. We had a, a fast food type restaurant that wanted to come in, you may recall recently, the board denied it. Again, it would be nice to have standards in place to justify that denial. And then D, kind of has an exception. If, if they don't contribute to the sales tax base, here's when you can consider a, basically a non-retail restaurant business. I think this would make a decision of the board in denying a permit or in imposing certain conditions more defensible if legal action were taken and gives you some guidelines. So any questions on that? Any expansion of the conditions that you would consider or clarification? Let me know. Moving on then, when I started drafting changes to the special use section, there were some corresponding changes that I thought should be made to section thirteen point oh-seven of the zoning ordinance addressing variances. Those changes were made primarily for consistency between the sections. Those changes are underlined. I really don't know if there's anything to point out of importance there, but certainly if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. Moving on then to section thirteen oh-nine, special uses. One thing that was added that I noted in reviewing the section is that there were no standards for approving or denying a special use. The Planning and Zoning Commission has always approved written findings of fact and sends them on to you and those are kind of based on a somewhat recent Illinois Supreme Court case law saying, here's, here's a standard. But most communities have standards built into their zoning ordinance. I reviewed probably ten different communities and found the standards were all very similar, if not identical, and I've inserted those standards. Those would be part of kind of revised findings of fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission will review and vote on and forward to you and conditions you can consider. The most significant change comes in subsection F to this ordinance, which is a new section. It basically says that a special use shall not run with the land, but applies only to the applicant who receives it. This next section may generate some conversation. It says it shall automatically terminate upon sale or transfer of at least seventy-five percent of the special use holders' assets or stock, membership units or partners. I don't know how you feel about that seventy-five percent rule, whether you want the sale of a business to be a trigger requiring a new special use or not. Take an example, you may have an automobile dealership, Mercedes, all of a sudden comes in, there's new corporate ownership, they would step into the shoes of the existing owner. Would you want them to come before you and get a new special use? You may have other existing special uses with perhaps not the most upstanding corporate citizens and/or you're unsure about who the new owner is and you'd want to know more about them and how they're planning to operate this business.
I think so, cause sometimes new owners have new ideas that weren't contemplated by the original one and in the corporate context, I kind of don't like surprises.
Now, seventy-five percent, I tried to make it so it was a substantial sale of assets, not, you know, if, if you have a father-son, the father passes away, the son takes it over, all of a sudden he's back in front of you. This would be something a little bit more. You're still going to have situations where something can be closely held within a family, but there's still a substantial change of ownership. They're going to have to come in front of you and go through the process and spend the money. As long as you're all okay with that. Kind of similar to what you do with the liquor licenses.
Right.
The next change then is when there's a cessation or ceasing of the special use for a consecutive period of at least ninety days. Now, it doesn't apply when there's a cessation of the use because they're doing some remodeling, repairs, et cetera. They have a building permit and they pursue it to completion with diligence. This just applies to when the use stops and it's, nothing's happening and we don't know why. You may feel the ninety days is too strict. That's what you do for legal non-conforming uses and structures right now in the zoning ordinance. If those uses cease for ninety days or more, they lose their legal non-conforming status. That's where I got the ninety days from.
Right, that's fine. I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
On that, and I, I think it's reasonable, but on that section, if somebody were to come in and let us know, then we would have, we would have, the board would have that opportunity to say, okay, we can extend it. So say after sixty days or something and then he comes back or she comes back and says, you know what, I'm going to continue, but I can't get it going for another, you know, sixty days. We'd have that opportunity to.
Great point. My relative in California is sick, I have to close down the business for six months and go tend to him, I'll reopen it.
Something like that. As long as they tell us, it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's some language in there that, you know, once you grant a special use approval, they have to activate the use, start, start it within ninety days or if it involves new construction, get the construction done within twelve months unless they come before you and say, we know it's going to take longer or come back af, you know, right before twelve months and say, we need a longer time period. It also clarifies the, the current practice, which is allowed by law, that you can impose special conditions on a special use. Also requires that you can require a site plan for a special use, even if they're not proposing any new construction, you may want to see what the current layout and configuration is and make changes to that as part of the special use process. And then lastly, section thirteen point eleven amendments, that's just for map and text amendments under the zoning ordinance and I made a few kind of corresponding cleaning up changes, nothing of significance there, just so that all the sections read in a similar fashion.
Is our agenda wrong then? It says amendments to section thirteen point twelve amendments. It should be section thirteen point eleven.
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that section thirteen oh-nine for special uses, under C three, after denial of a special use request by the village board, no applicant may apply for the same or substantially similar special use for the property in question until at least two years have elapsed since the date of the denial. I'd like to see that at one year because if somebody comes in and we turn down a special use because of a number of factors and they go back to the drawing board, if it's one year, they can do a lot of changes and come back for a similar use, but a whole different way to get there. Two years is a long time to keep somebody away from an application.
And should we clarify that to say the same applicant has to wait? So for example, if one guy comes in?
Yes, because somebody else can come in.
A month later?
A month later, yes, if it's a different applicant, mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll clarify it to say the same applicant cannot reapply until at least one year have, has elapsed. Everyone okay with that?
That makes sense, that's good. Yeah, and there's a, I like the way you wrote this, cause there's sometimes a question of the same applicant can, comes back to avoid a section like that by asking for a zoning change, which is not a special use, but that's a whole different issue. So you want the same applicant language in that section.
Okay.
Good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Next item, personnel actions. Board to consider motion authorizing the following personnel-related actions. A, lifting the hiring freeze to fill two part-time budgeted positions in the fire department and B, waiving the advertising requirement of the Personnel Code, section sixty-two dash fifty-six, one, in order to hire a qualified retired inspector from the Pleasant View Fire District for a part-time inspector position and to hire a current volunteer EMA member for a paid EMA position.
Good evening. Director Daniels and I are here to answer any questions concerning this. Basically what we have are a couple of vacancies, which we'd like to fill with qualified personnel. Captain Daniels?
We have lost two of our inspectors due to injuries. They may or may not return, we don't know, but regardless, we are easily a quarter behind in our inspections and we have budgeted time that was allowed that we aren't using. And the opportunity came up with this gentleman retired and I will say about fifteen years ago, when Bob Nielsen had my job, one time he says, come on, we're going to lunch. And remember, he's from Oakbrook, so he's been around the area a long time and he brought me to meet this gentleman and his boss and he had a lot of respect for him and it was a continual relationship that we had with Pleasant View because they are on a level that we are to educate their inspectors and to follow the different codes that we follow. So when this gentleman did retire, we talked and I said, here's an opportunity to fill in some opens. And more importantly, of the six inspectors we have, five of them work a gold shift, which is red, black and gold are the three shifts that firefighters work. So on gold shifts, which is twice a week, I lose four out of the five inspectors and this gentleman would be able to help me fill that position. He has all the current credentials that we would require and, and even additional credentials. It was just a golden opportunity for us to snatch him up if we could. And again, this is not extra money, this is budgeted money that we have and it'll get us current with our inspections due to the injuries of the other players. He is aware that should a situation arise where these other inspectors come back and we have to cut back on hours, he would be cut back and he is fully acceptable of that. And any questions?
What I was about to ask is if they, if the ones return, what would happen to him? So he understands he's the low man on the totem.
He is, he does. And he has other opportunities to do other things, but again, he's, he works well with our staff. We've known him for very long. We've known him for a long.
So, since that's a situation, do we do that similar to what we did in the police department, interment a temporary position? Because if the other inspectors come back to full duty, you know, they take precedence.
Well, they are a part-time job, so their hours are very flexible. We don't require them to work, let's say, 20 hours a week. If they only work 12 hours a week, then that's what they do, and he might be around to fill in the other eight.
So if the other two come back to work, do you intend on keeping him, or do you want to see, like, how it shakes out as to what...
Yeah, we would see how it shakes out. We would just work within our budget, a lot of time, and just see how things work out that way. Because most of our inspectors are captains or battalion chiefs in other departments. So they're in upper staff positions, and they're being called more back to their full-time jobs. There could be two months that I might see somebody only 10 hours a week. It's good having a retired person, because I have a little more dependability with him.
Flexible, right. Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, any other questions?
The next position is that of EMA staff director. David Lincoln's been with us for a number of years, and due to his full-time job, which is an ordinance, a local church, he has to cut back in the time which he spends with our EMA unit. Dave does an outstanding job working with EMA and also with the fire department, which is, EMA is a division of the department. And he helps with our communication van, he helps with different portable radios, readjusting their frequencies, and other work with the department. Comes on call-outs with us, help maintain the communication equipment for us, and does that type work. His hours are being drastically reduced due to his full-time job, and so we already have another new EMA member, Fritz Hayden, who will step up if this is approved tonight, and then fill the vacant hours that Dave has left open. And so we're operating within the budget that we have, nothing's being added. It's almost like a light situation with the Fire Prevention Bureau.
Fritz was our intern here, correct?
Yes, Fritz came to us as an intern. Matter of fact, we will be seeing him soon when we do a storm-ready program, which he developed. So he's an outstanding young man. He's, right now, he finished his, or is in the process of finishing his schooling. He has a, working as a DuPage County sheriff right now, part of an intern program. He has told me that he lights EMA so much that that's what he wants to have a career in, rather than law enforcement. So he's going to be doing, switching gears a little bit, and, but that is, that's his primary goal right now. And so for, with Fritz on the job with us, it's been beneficial for him, and then also for the Village of Westmore.
Right.
And is this budgeted? We've got the money in the budget?
This was, yes, this is the same amount of money budgeted, just that Dave Lincoln is stepping back, and then Fritz would then step in and work those hours that would be available to him.
Right.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Frank. Next item, surplus equipment. Board to consider motion to declare village property as surplus. This is all property from the fire department, consisting of breathing apparatus, masks, bottles, hose, ladders, generators, and there were a few other things that have been added since this afternoon, additional ladders, and what else is there that you got from the chief?
Brook ladders. First of all, I should point out, this equipment's going to be declared surplus, and it's going to be donated to the Illinois State Fire Marshals, who used the equipment fund, which is then in turn provided to departments that can't necessarily afford this type of equipment. So it is going to go for a good public benefit. But yes, as the mayor referenced this afternoon, the chief identified for several other items he'd like to add to that list. So if you look in the packet, there's 40 SCBA packs that are identified. I think we've identified seven more that we'd like to add to that list. And then two more ladders, so that would bring the total to six. And then four handheld gas meters, natural gas meters, is that correct, chief?
That's correct.
To that total list that we'd like to declare surplus.
Any questions? Thank you. Next item, IMRF. Board to consider motion approve two IMRF resolutions. A, suggested resolution to include compensation paid under an internal revenue code, section 125 plan, as IMRF earnings. And B, suggested resolution include taxable allowances as IMRF earnings for auto and phone.
This is twofold action. IMRF is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, which is the pension plan for our non-public safety employees. The first item the mayor mentioned, which is a resolution addressing the IRS section 125 plans, this was something that was brought to our HR director's attention at a recent workshop that IMRF had, that in order to report those costs as IMRF earnings, we need to pass a resolution, and that is contained in your packet. The 125, section 125 plan is what we call our pay flex plan for our employees. It's the medical savings account program that we've had in place for several years for our employees. The second part of this is, actually, it was something that was identified as part of a routine compliance audit that IMRF does, and they brought to our attention, because we've been having to amend our reported earnings to IMRF, that it would be more cost-effective to, in fact, pass this resolution and report payments for auto and phone allowances as reported earnings to IMRF. What we have been doing, and what we've been required to do, is actually go back and amend our reported earnings, which takes staff time in order to do that. So we're suggesting that this, again, the resolutions in your packet, it's a standard resolution that IMRF has, that we would ask you to consider approving that.
Okay. Questions?
Just so people at home understand that our employees that are covered under IMRF, the flex plan money is withheld from their paychecks, so their W2s don't reflect it, but it is part of their salary, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And also, the allowances for auto and phone, they pay tax on it as if it were income.
Correct.
Therefore, it should be included as part of their earnings for retirement purposes.
That's correct.
Okay, just so that nobody at home thinks we're unduly jacking up people's salary for no good reason.
No, it, the, no, I understand your point, that's correct.
Any other comments? Next item, appropriations amendment. Board to consider an ordinance amending appropriations for corporate purposes for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2010.
Our legal spending document is our appropriation ordinance that we have to approve each year by the end of the first fiscal, the first quarter of the fiscal year. We have done that this year. However, because we have been working, and we've had a lot of discussions at the Administration Finance Committee level in terms of trying to improve our funding levels for our police pension fund, we need to make an adjustment in the line items of the appropriation ordinance. We're not going to increase the appropriation ordinance. What we were able to do is identify, there's a line item there that was at a certain level for some grant money that we'd applied for, that we did not get. This was for the cops program. So basically, we're asking permission to take that money and transfer it from one line item to the line item, and the board has identified that they want us to increase our compensation to achieve what the actuaries identified that we need to fund the pension fund at.
Are we allowed to do, are we allowed to make that line item change?
Yes. There are very, very limited circumstances under which you can amend your appropriations ordinance, which is usually set in stone. One is if there's litigation needed to set up a fund, one is you stumble upon money, one situation is an emergency.
Stumble upon money? How does that happen? Has that ever happened?
Treasure trove.
I don't think it actually says that.
I think that's the statutory language. And the last reason is if you can make basically inter-fund transfers. So within the general fund, if you have money appropriated for one object or purpose within that fund, you can shuffle the money around. You can't go from the water fund to the general fund and affect your appropriations, as long as your bottom line is the same, and you're not spending more money than you originally appropriated. And that's exactly what we're doing here. We've got, was it, police grant money that's not going to be actually spent this year. It was kind of surplus money, and oftentimes you do over-appropriate, and so it was appropriate to make that change.
Oh, great.
As a matter of fact, in the ordinance, I had the statutory site that allows us to do that, if you want to look it up.
Is this going to bring us, well, let me back up a second. I believe it was Monday that the House passed that there's going to be fines on municipalities that aren't making their appropriate contributions to the police and fire pensions?
Yeah, that legislation is going to the governor for signature. It hasn't been signed yet.
Right.
But yes, there is a language in there that if you don't fund it at 90% of what the actuaries identified, that there will be fines. I think that actually doesn't go into effect until, like, 2014.
And this is actually going to, appropriations ordinance will now be consistent with the 2010 tax levy that will be coming up soon.
Right.
Which is what, appropriating at?
105%.
105%.
So we're not even, you know, it's not even close to what the legal limit, the new legal limit is going to be.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, we've been shooting for the high end of things, to make sure that we don't get into trouble later on, even long down the road. So just checking, thanks.
Other questions? Next item, finance ordinance, number 15.
Waive the reading?
Request to waive the reading. Purchase orders. Questions on purchase orders? There are no questions? Moving right along. We have a request from the manager for Personnel, Executive Session. Unless there's something else to be brought forward at this time, entertain a motion to go into Executive Session regarding personnel.
So move, Seneca. Second, Emery. Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Flavonal?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Porsley?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned to Executive Session.